Good evening. The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees is now convened in the Committee of the Whole Meeting on Monday, March 4th, 2019 at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center, located at 10,300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas, for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Thursday, March 7th, 2019 regular board meeting agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. No action will be taken at this meeting. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, Board members received information relating to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting and permitted by Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on CFTV Channel 16 and CFTV online on the district website. They will also be rebroadcast throughout the month on Channel 16 and available as video on demand on the website. For the tape to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in the silent mode, just as I'm doing right now. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize our community leadership committee members who are in attendance this evening. We have one, Ms. Julie Honeman. Julie, would you stand and take a bow? That's your bow? Okay. The recognitions, Board comments, and citizen participation portion of the agenda will be presented at the regular board meeting on Thursday, March 7th, 2019. At this time, we will proceed with the written report portion of the agenda. Under the written report 4A, the administration will provide a written report on the district's participation in the purchasing cooperatives for the 2017-18 fiscal year. Presenter is Bill Powell. Is Bill here?
It's a written report.
It's a written report. Oh, it does say questions only. If I just keep reading, I'm okay. Okay. So, Monday, it's questions only. Anyone have a question on the Board? Anyone? Tom?
And this is really for the viewing audience. Bill, if you would, explain the benefit of a cooperative board in this example. I know we've used it already this calendar year.
You're talking about the Central Texas Purchasing Alliance?
Yes.
There are several cooperatives, as you see listed there. There's one, two, three, four, five, six. There's 13 that we participate in, but the Central Texas Purchasing Alliance allows us to utilize other governmental entities' quotes and bids that they've already received as long as the vendor approves and the other district or other government entity approves. We can go off the bid that they've already have completed, and it allows us to also negotiate better pricing for the district.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? We okay? Okay. Under action items, we will now review the following consensus action items. 5A, the Board will consider approving the tax refunds of $500 or greater for Cypress Fairbanks ISD. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Snow? Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Snow, there is a very large refund being written to an entity with food in its name. Are we buying food from them as opposed to a tax refund?
No, it's a tax refund to a...it's a food distributor that has various warehouse locations throughout the Houston area, including the Cyfair area. But it's...we're taxing them on the real property that they own as well as the inventory, and it's a refund of their taxes. In fact, there are several, two or three different tax refunds that are relative to different tax years.
Very good. Thank you. The...I often don't indicate why I ask questions, but I will in this regard. So, I've asked this type of question off and on over the past seven years because often very well-intentioned individuals in the public will take a look at checks that we write and reach the inappropriate conclusion when we're writing these checks that they're not really for a tax refund. So, whenever an unusual name or an unusual amount appears, I will often ask a question about it. So, thank you.
It might be well-intended. They're not very bright.
Was that a question or a statement?
That's a statement.
Okay. Just wondering. Okay. The Board will consider approving the minutes of the February 4th, 2019 special call board meeting. Do we have any questions or concerns about that? No? 5C, the Board will consider approving the minutes of the February 11th, 2019 regular board meeting. Any questions, changes, concerns? Nope. Okay. The Board will now review the following non-consensus action items. 6A, the Board will consider approving the first reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. Number one, CCG Local, local revenue sources, add valorem taxes, delete. Number two, CCGA Local, add valorem taxes, exemptions, and payments, add. Number three, CQ Local, technology resources, revise. Any reason why we can't move this to consensus? Anybody have any questions? Okay. We'll move that to consent. 6B, the Board will consider approving an administration's recommendation for the 2019-2020 Open-Closed Campus Designations for Student Transfers. Anyone have any questions? Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you, Kristi.
I can go.
If I keep reading, it says presentation.
Evening. It's that time of year again. Based on enrollment projections and building capacities, the Office of Planning Services would like to share our recommendations for the campuses that will be open for student transfers for the 2019...2019 and 2020 school year. First, I want to remind everyone of the enclosed, open-closed policy and the transfer policy that we have in place currently. Each year, the Board is asked to approve our recommendations for open campuses. Once identified as an open campus, Student Services uses a tiered process with three different levels without reading this entire policy to you. Number one is referring to any school that is open to all CFISD residents and employees. These are our Tier One campuses. Number two is referring to campuses that will be closed to all new transfers but will be available for CFISD employees only. Those are Tier Two campuses. And then number three is referring to campuses that will be closed to all new transfers but will be only available to CFISD employees who are assigned to a facility or a building located with the attendant zone of that school that's requested. In summary, once approved by the Board, all campuses will be identified as a Tier One, Tier Two, or Tier Three campus. Little bit of math here. To determine whether a school will open, will be open, we look at the capacity of the school and the projected student enrollment for the upcoming year. Once our enrollment projections are established, we use these formulas. A campus will be designated as open if the projected enrollment is less than 95% of the building capacity without portables. And these, again, are our Tier One campuses. If enrollment projections exceed the building capacity and is greater than the 105, 110, and 115 for elementary schools, these schools are only open to those employees who work at that school or for an employee that is located within the tenant zone of that school requested, and those are our Tier Three campuses. So, in between, you have the Tier Two, and these are the campuses that are greater than 95 but less than the 105, 110, and 115% for the schools, and those are our Tier Two campuses that are open to all CFISD employees. In summary, if the projected enrollment is less than 95, that campus is open to all current residents and employees for a designated number of spots determined by Student Services. Again, those are our Tier One. If projected enrollment is between the 95 and the 105, 110, 115, then those are Tier Two and open to only CFISD employees. And then again, the Tier Three are only those employees that...at that campus or in that facility near there in the tenant zone of the school that they've requested. Once the Board approves the list of open campuses, Student Services will soon be calculating the number of open spots available for each campus based on the tier system. Here's the timeline provided by Student Services. If the Board approves this list, Student Services will advertise the campuses that are open starting Friday, March 8th. April 1st, the Registrar's and Student Services will start accepting those applications, and then June 3rd will be the deadline to apply. Student Services will be getting open campus and transfer information out in a variety of ways, as you can see by this list provided. And then the transfer applications are available in the Registrar's office on all campuses or the district website, and a transfer application must be submitted to the campus registrar or student transfers at cfisd.net by June 3rd, 2019. The 2019-2020 recommendation, Planning Services, we recommend eight high schools, five middle schools, and 25 elementary schools be open for transfers for the 19-20 school year, a total of 38 open campuses. And those campuses are...elementary. Need to read all of those? Okay. All right. So, we have...and 25, 5, and 8. And that is it. Any questions?
Board, do we have any questions? Ms. Jackson?
And this question's really for Dr. Henry. Mark, it appears to me that we have slightly less than the entire district that is open for transfer, and these schools run the gambit on demographics. So, would you consider that we are, in fact, providing school choice?
Short answer, yes, sir. In fact, that's one of the things that we like to make sure that the public knows that we do have school choice here in Cyfair ISD, and obviously, not all campuses are open, but we do, as you can see, have a sizable number of campuses, as you said, in all geographic portions of the district that are available for transfer. So, yes, sir, we do have school choice.
And for these campuses, does it also include relatively new or new campuses as well as relatively recently renovated campuses? Or are these just campuses that still need a lot of work?
Absolutely. We have campuses, in fact, Bridgeland High School is our newest high school, Cypress Park is our second to newest high school, and then you go over to Elementary School, and Wells is our newest elementary school, and they're both on the open transfer list.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any questions? Kristi? Yes, sir. Mr. Ryan?
Kristi, for the, I guess, parents that want to apply for that transfer, are these done on a first-come, first-served basis?
They are.
So, the spots fill up, so once that...if they're a parent that wants to transfer or a student that wants to transfer, they need to get in their application early because it doesn't...each school will have a limited number of openings based on what their current enrollment is now or what it's going to project it to be, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one from me, Kristi. In looking at some of the schools that are open campuses, I know a number of those schools also have portables that they're using. So, whenever you say they're at the 95% full or whatever, is that based on also considering the portables they've got, or is that strictly the facility itself?
It's the facility itself, pass through the building alone.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Kristi. 6C, the Board will consider...oh, can we move that to consent? Okay. Thank you. 6C, the Board will consider awarding the bids and contracts and our authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda item. This is Monday. We have questions only. Number one, athletic equipment and supplies. Number two, district progress monitor testing, DPM scanning device. Number three, internet port and related services at data center four. Number four, library books, reference books, eBooks, publications, and media supplies. And number five, Z-Track mowers for maintenance department. Does anybody on the Board have any questions on this? Mr. Jackson?
And I'm not real certain who to direct the question to, but I'm confident somebody will answer. Item number four, library books, eBooks, and that sort of thing. How are we doing on equipping our schools with e-readers for the eBooks themselves?
Mr. Jackson, oh, my...Mr. Jackson, we have, as you know, at the campuses themselves, a number of tablets and also other Chromebooks that can be used for the e-readers. But addition...in addition to that, we have...how many...how many Kindles did we say last time? Holly, do you remember? Now, we ordered 700 this last round of Kindles, but I want to say we have somewhere around 7,000 of our member altogether in the district of Kindles that are available to our students. And then in the libraries, we also have Chromebooks that can be checked out as needed for our students.
And I would presume we're still transitioning from older technology that is still functional to the newer technology. Is that a correct presumption?
That is correct. We still have a couple of areas that we're still...we still need to roll out the technology to, the new technology, but while we're doing that, there is functional technology there for them.
Very good. Thank you.
Just to add one thing, and it's not exactly tied together, but it is related, just so the Board knows and the community knows, we are still doing some technology classroom upgrades off the 2014 bond. As you remember, when we started the 2014, we said everyone would not get their classroom makeover in one year because it's financially and physically impossible to do that. So, throughout this year and next year, we will still be working off that 2014 bond program, giving all of our classrooms a technology makeover. So, I just wanted to make sure that everyone in their community knows that, as Linda said, they may not have got them in 2015, but they're going to get even newer versions in 2019 and '20 because they had to wait a little longer. So, just wanted to be clear on that.
And Dr. Henry, that's a key point. As you wait, you actually get more up-to-date technology. So, perhaps a unintended or intended benefit of spreading the technology transfer over a large number of years is we get the benefit of technology as it continues to improve.
That's correct.
And you may recall that we purposefully did not buy any tools the first year. We worked on getting the infrastructure ready, so we knew that we were going to go all the way through the end of the bond cycle.
Okay. I do have a question to Mr. Powell, if you don't mind coming back up again. I'm sorry, Bill. I'm not going to tell you what the superintendent said, but it was just rude.
I'm used to it.
Okay. On the Z-Track mowers, much like our buses and some of the other things, do we have a life cycle that we work with these on?
Yes, sir. It's 2,000 hours. That's the industry standard, is 2,000 hours.
So, what does that equate to a year? How many hours?
That's a good question.
Okay.
You have any idea how many hours?
Many, 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 many years. If they don't know, I'll answer. I'm just kidding. I will find out and get back to you.
Okay. That's fine. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Board, can we move that to consent? Everybody's okay? All right. 6D, the Board will consider approving construction proposals and contracts paid from the 2014 bond funds to the recommended contractor and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts as follows. Number one, 2018 Aragon Middle School renovations. Number two, 2018 Blile and Campbell Middle School gym floor and HVAC repairs and replacement. You have any questions on this? Anyone? Mr. Jackson? Mr. Morgan, you may want to just trot back on up here.
First, let me say I appreciate having more details about the scope in the summary letter, but I still think we need to review it for the viewing public.
Yes, sir.
So, for Aragon, fairly significant amount of dollars being spent on renovations for Aragon. If you would briefly touch what the renovations are, was Aragon impacted by any of the three floods leading up to Harvey? And is any of the dollars related to any remediation work as relates to potential future flooding?
Aragon was not impacted by any of the three floods we've had recently. The majority of the work at Aragon is going to be the four-lane track, the four-lane track, competition track. Because of the tight space at Aragon, we've had to relocate the competition tracks. We're doing the bleachers, we're doing the press box and the lighting as well, and that's the majority of the scope at Aragon.
There's a reference in the scope of the work to additional work on the detention pond?
We did. The county did require us to add some detention. That's just standard.
For the track, Aragon is a middle school, so will at some point in time, will that be open to the public?
Yes. Yes, sir.
So, we are, in fact, keeping our promise to the public that as we renovated the high school tracks, which desperately needed it, by adding the tracks at the middle schools, we're still making the asset available to the public?
Yes, sir. As we go through and renovate each middle school track and add the four-lane tracks, they'll all be available to the public.
Just to add to that, going back again all the way to 2014, because we added the field turf to all of our high schools, that's an asset that's very expensive and needs to be protected. So, we try to keep the high school tracks locked up for the safety of that turf and then, of course, with all the track equipment. And the idea was through our about-to-be-19 middle schools and eventually 20 middle schools that we would have a track available for the public that would be more neighborhood-based and be open for them to use.
Very good. Thank you.
Well, before you sit down, just one question for you. Because I think it's good for everyone to know, what is our procedure on making decisions on something like this? I know we plan on putting the track in, but looking some of the other things that we're doing, do we like go in every facility every year, or do we do that every six months? Or do we have certain people that are in charge of different facilities that give us updates on what needs to be updated and changed and improved?
Well, not unlike the process we just went through with the 2019 bond. In 2014, we set a group of architects and engineers, and our facilities cruise out to survey each school, to visit with campus administration, to visit with our maintenance teams, our facilities teams, and then we compile a list of things that are approved in the bond. And so, for each school that we renovate, we have a list of bond scope, and as we go into that school, we complete that list of bond scope for those schools.
And Matt, that's what I want. I wanted to have the answer out there so they knew we were following the bond. That's what we're doing.
Mr. Covey, I would like to add too that we also do an update annually with our five-year maintenance plan, which is a management document we use internally. So, our maintenance department's constantly looking at all our various systems, tracks, surfaces out there, and that document gets updated, and we use that as one of our planning tools when we do a bond study.
Thank you, Roy. Thanks, Matt. We're going to move that to consent, or do we want that to stand alone?
Move it.
Move it to consent? Okay.
Move the bond funds.
All right. With the rest of the Board, we're going to have that stand alone? Is that all right? Okay. Holly, we're going to have that one stand alone. 6E, the Board will consider approving and authorizing the superintendent or designate to enter into the miscellaneous professional service contracts related to the following project. Number one, 2018 Aragon Middle School renovations. Any questions on this? Think it was answered? Do we want this to stand alone, or can we move this to consent? Are you in favor of going to consent on this one? Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for voting, Debbie. So, we're moving that to consent, Holly. 6F, the Board will consider approving the granting of a temporary construction easement to Harris County Municipal Utility District Number 10 to construct sidewalks along Goodson Middle School adjacent to Barker Cypress Road and authorize the superintendent or designate to negotiate the final terms and execute all related documents. We have any questions on this, Board? Yes. Thank you, Debbie.
I'm really happy to see that this is going to happen because it really was needed in that neighborhood.
Can we move that to consent? Is that all right? Okay. 6G, the Board will consider the approval of the right-of-way dedication easement to Harris County for road and road drainage improvements or Kluge Road at Hamilton Middle School. Any questions on this one? Anybody? Can we move that to consent? Okay. 6H, the Board will consider authorizing the superintendent or designate to finalize and execute an amendment to the existing water supply and waste disposal agreement with Cypress Creek Utility District for utility services and connections for the old Matski Elementary School repurpose. We have any questions for Mr. Sprague on that? Can we move that to consent? All right. Moving it to consent, Holly. 61, the Board...61...6I, the Board will consider granting a water meter easement to Cypress Creek Utility District for water service and connection for the old Matski Elementary School repurpose and authorizing the superintendent or designate to finalize the terms and execute the easement documents. Do we have any questions on this? John, would you like to take over?
Only one thing.
There's one thing left. I want him to know we missed him. Can we move that to consent?
Yes.
Okay. 6J, the Board will consider approving the water line maintenance easement to Harris County Fresh Water Supply District Number 61 located along Huffmeister Road north of Tuckerton to service Cypress Falls High School. Do we have any questions on that one? Can we move that to consent? Okay. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
The answer to Bob's question is five years. Do you remember the question, Bob?
I do, but I'm impressed you came up with that.
Well, Bill texted it up here to me.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. Thank you. And the answer was a good one. That's good. Okay. The superintendent will provide information regarding district events and items of community interest at the regular board meeting on Thursday, March 7th, 2019. Does anybody on the Board have anything else I'd like to share? Okay. Then what? I can't what? Then, we are adjourned. You may go home. Thank you. Watch American Idol. Is that still on?
Is that still on?